Welcome to the Barrowville School Committee meeting, February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, at the Barrowville Media Center, four twenty-five East Avenue, Harrisville, Rhode Island. Doing roll call, everyone is here except for Jill Calipari, she has an excused absence. Would you please all join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I begin this meeting, I'd like to just acknowledge the passing of one of Barrowville's former longtime teachers and coaches, Mr. Peter McLaughlin. Mr. McLaughlin was very well respected by his students, athletes, and peers. On behalf of the Barrowville School District, I would like to extend our condolences to Mr. McLaughlin's family and friends. Would you please join me in a moment of silence to honor Mr. McLaughlin? Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Recognition, we have none tonight. Item agenda number three, consent agenda. Approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January fourteenth executive session and the January fourteenth regular meeting.
All in favor? I'm sorry, second?
Second.
Second, seconded by Dave Landry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the January twenty twenty-five warrant for number seven, for the month of January dated February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Grand total expenditures, two million, five hundred twenty-two thousand, six hundred seventy-three dollars and thirty cents.
Second.
Second by Sean, second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
And we have no bids. Moving on to item agenda number four, presentation by the public to the school committee.
We have none tonight.
There is none tonight, okay. Number five, public comment. It doesn't look like we have any of that, so moving right along. Item agenda number six, personnel.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the leave of absence of Ashley Krenka, Assistant Principal, Barrowville High School, on or before March the twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty-five through May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the retirements of Gregory Romowitz, Systems Analyst, effective May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, and also Lannica Thompson, Principal, A.T. Levy, effective June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, with much thanks and best wishes.
Make a motion?
Second.
Second? Second Sylvia?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Donison, second by Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the resignations of Morgan Canoyer, softball assistant coach, Barrowville High School, effective January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Holly Wright, teacher assistant, Barrowville High School, effective January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. And Jacqueline Bowman O'Keefe, kindergarten teacher, A.T. Levy, effective January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. And we've also got resignation also of Dylan Brown, music teacher, Willie Mel Callahan, A.T. Levy, effective June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, motion made by Donison, second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to receive and file the subsequent appointments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sylvia? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item agenda number seven.
We still have two other items under six.
Yep.
Oh.
Just looking for a motion to receive and file on the renewal of administrator contracts, and I'm also looking to table the non-renewals.
Okay, I will make both those motions to receive and file, administrative contracts, and also, well, that's the first motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so motion made by Donison, second by Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And also I'll make a motion to table agenda item sixty.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Donison, second by Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now moving on. Item, agenda item number seven, old business. Barrowville School District update. FY twenty-five Barrowville School District budget update.
I make a motion to receive and file?
Second.
Second by Sean. Motion made by Donison, second by Sean, all in favor? FY twenty-five RINC budget update.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Second by, motion made by Donison, second by Sean, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. Policy thirty-four twenty-one, artificial intelligence, A.I. policy, second reading.
Make a motion to approve?
I have some, I have a few questions with regards to the A.I. policy.
If you want to make a second and then discuss.
Second.
Sylvia, you second? Okay, motion made by Donison, Sylvia, seconded. Open for discussion?
So is the, is the district providing any professional development with regards to the use of generative A.I.?
Yes, that's a, it's a good question. The last Professional Development Day, we had kind of a roundtable discussion with some industry experts and some educational experts as well about A.I. that, I think we had about twenty-five or thirty teachers that attended. We'll continue to offer those kind of opportunities for, for teachers, and obviously with the policy, it put some parameters around student use based on grade level and appropriate, appropriate uses. So obviously, it's something that's going to continue to evolve as the years go on with artificial intelligence. But we want to have a policy in place that we have some kind of control over that for what's appropriate and what's inappropriate for both student use and for professional use.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's definitely a tool, it can be misunderstood. I saw it in districts that I've been in where it thinks that it's a good tool for kids to cheat, but used in the right hands in a proper way, even for, you know, staff. It's, it's, it's almost in every industry now. I think the only other question I had was, is, are we, are we looking at it like different platforms, Dr. Salito, and what platforms?
So the, the policy doesn't specifically mention any, any platforms, I mean, and I think that's done purposely, so it doesn't limit us into using one or two platforms that may be evolving over the next, you know, year or two as these things become more advanced and.
Oh, it's more and more prevalent, but right now, I would say the majority of use is by ChatGPT, probably number one. Bard is another one. And that's been used. Gemini use at all?
Gemini not really, it's probably starting now, that's, that's coming, that's really more on the phone than it is on.
What they're seeing is, if I could just put my personal experience into it, is they're seeing with the generative AIs, kind of like the privacy part of it, and what they reuse for information. And Google just came out with, which I'm sure Justin's aware of, the past sixty days, where if you have workstation, I don't know what's work, education workplace plus, they keep it all in-house. So they don't, it doesn't, it doesn't leave, no one, no one looks at it, it stays in that one area, it doesn't get used anywhere else. But I would, that was more of a curiosity of what we're looking at, because a lot of people are still using ChatGPT and others. Yes, we'll, we'll have, we do have a protocol that was developed to go along with this policy, that'll go out to all faculty and staff once the policy gets approved. So the first step really is to have the policy approved, and the protocol will go out, so teachers will know what, what is and isn't, you know, based on the policy, except for using the classroom, you know, what's age appropriate. Excellent. Thank you.
Sylvia?
I need some examples of positive outcomes for A.I. What are some positive things that kids get out of it? I understand as far as research goes, but how does it, how do these kids use this to make a positive thing for them?
So it's, it's, it's a difficult question, because it depends on, you know, what assignment is, what the perspective is of the student, what they're really using it for. So I, I think originally, the negative connotation about artificial intelligence is that kids can use it to cheat, right? That's what comes to people's mind right away, but as we know, it's not going anywhere. And, and everybody has A.I. in, in their hand, in their pocket, on their phone. And, you know, kids are just going to be exposed to it at younger and younger ages, and they need to figure out how to use that constructively and not use it to cheat, for lack of a better, you know.
How can they use it, what is an example?
Ben, you want to, you want to address this, so we have our student rep on here, who's raising a hand, so I'll certainly hand it over to him.
Can I have an example of it, using it constructively, something good that comes from it?
So I don't take any, like, for example, I use it today in engineering. I, my classmates are working on like a project while I'm working on my Skills USA thing, which I'm taking to round competitions in March. And I used it, I don't take any coding classes, so I'm not too familiar with like how to code Python. There's certain, certain packages which I don't know how to code, and I'll type in what I want it to code, what I want it to do, and it can output code for me and debug code for me, which I don't really know how to do.
So rather than you figuring, figuring it out, the A.I., the computer fix, figures it out for me.
But that, like, that coding is not something you could just figure out, and it's not something that, I mean, that's something that takes a while to figure out coding. So, and Ben, it's not really part of, not really part of his curriculum, but he needs to do, needs to know that for the project for Skills USA. So those kind of things would be, you know, beneficial. There's also things that it could create for you from a teacher's perspective, it could create a template. So if you go to ChatGPT and say, create a template that asks, you know, for, for three reasons for the fall of Rome, and it has X, Y, and Z, that's age appropriate for a fifth grader, it'll create that template for you. And it will be age appropriate and those kind of things. So there are definitely some beneficial uses for both staff and. But finding, finding their way with that, I think the first step is to have a policy and some protocol that guides it, because it's not going anywhere. It's going to get more and more in-depth, it's going to get more and more complex. Our, you know, our kids, I think about kids that are starting high school next year, I mean, they were, you know, they were born in the artificial intelligence age, really. You know, all they know is Siri and Alexa and, and kind of apps, that you just ask a question and they give you immediate answers.
He doesn't give me immediate answers, doesn't see what I'm talking about.
Sometimes they don't answer either, but, but yeah, I think that's, I think that's something that's an important skill for kids and for our staff and students. Mike had said something about the rubric, based on how you write the rubric is how they will use it.
Okay.
But even having the teacher use like School A.I. or ChatGPT or even Gemini, they can say exactly what Mike was saying. I'm writing an English literature thing for eighth graders, make it eighth grade appropriate, and it'll write a rubric that's not set in stone, but it gives them a path to continue on, and the same thing with the kids can use it that way. A lot of times they'll take that and then they'll tweak it. They'll take what ChatGPT created and then they'll, you know, they'll put their own take on it. They'll use that as almost like an exemplar, exemplar, and then, you know, put it back together and change some things, but it gives you a starting point. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, moving on.
Do we have any motion on the floor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second Don's original motion.
Donison, did you make the motion?
Yeah, we, I made the motion, we open for discussion.
Okay.
So it's, right?
Then we're approving it, okay.
Yeah, we, so I did, I made the motion to approve.
Seconded, seconded, you just need to vote.
Just need to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, but we already did that. Okay, moving on to policy forty-two nineteen, internal controls for the management of grants, second revised reading.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Donison, seconded by Sean, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And moving on to policy forty-two twenty, Title One funding mythology, second reading.
Second.
Motion made by Sylvia, second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And moving on to a gym, agenda item, I try to consolidate the words, the superintendent's report.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair. So a couple of items on my report tonight. I want to start with our proposed school calendar for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. As you know, it'll be presented later in the, in the agenda on the new business for a discussion and vote. So we've surveyed staff regarding the winter break and the start date. Calendar you have in your packet is the recommended school calendar for next year. Last day of school will be scheduled for June sixteenth. The December, February, and April breaks are consistent with what's recommended at the state level by the Rhode Island Department of Education and the recommended state calendar, as well as most of our neighboring school districts. So as, as you know, we try to keep these weeks consistent with our neighbors to avoid potential childcare issues for parents and staff. It's important that if we have an April vacation, that it's the same week as most of our neighboring schools, where many of our staff members may live, so that their, you know, their breaks are aligned with that of their children, it doesn't become a childcare issue. So we think that this calendar does that. It's pretty standard as far as our school start date, our end dates as well. We have as much listed on there as we can, and obviously if there are any additions or any changes that, that happen due to unforeseen circumstances at this point, we may have to revise the calendar, but we want to get this out and get it publicly out to parents as soon as possible. Take plans for things like summer vacation and, and other plans for the next school year. We want to get this out to them as soon as they can, as well as our staff, so they can plan accordingly. So that is later in, in the meeting under new business. Also want to mention that our annual presentation to the Budget Board is scheduled for February twentieth, it's in the Town Council chambers. Information presented will be similar to what was presented at the Joint Town Council School Committee meeting earlier this month, and we'll update it with a few slides here or there, but for the most part, there hasn't been much change since the, the last meeting, so slides will be very similar to what was presented last week.
What was the date on that?
That is February twentieth. It's in the Town Council chambers, I believe that's seven o'clock. Robin, you know if it's seven o'clock? You're probably right. I'll confirm that with, with you. Let you know the precise time of that. A couple of other items on my, my report tonight. We've invited members to participate in our Space Needs Subcommittee, which we discussed at the last meeting. So Chairwoman Lacy and I met last week to discuss this. We have asked that the Town Council be represented by the school liaison, Mr. Hool, who's here tonight. We've also asked the Town Planner, Mr. Goff, to serve on the committee. We have two school committee members, we've got a parent on the committee, we have several of folks from the school department as well. And we'll hope to have a meeting within the next month or so. One thing that I did want to mention is that the requirements by the Department of Education for a building committee, if there's any work that needs to be submitted for right approval, there's a specific building committee makeup that you have to have. So this committee fulfills that obligation, so if there are any decisions later down the road that need to be approved at the Department of Education level, then we will have a building committee already in place. Our plans right now are to investigate the cost for an outside company to come in and do an engineering and feasibility study that would provide us some different options and some information as far as what our schools look like, what our enrollment projections look like, what our capabilities are at each of our school buildings, and then make some decisions based on that. So we're in the process of putting together a request for proposals. And once that's done, it'll go out to several companies that are on the master price agreement from the Department of Education, and then we'll, we'll get some cost estimates from there, and then I'll bring it back to both the school committee and the Town Council for next steps. So we're developing that RFP and hope to have it done within the next week or two, and then go out to bid. The reason you have to have an outside engineering company to, to do this kind of study, again, goes back to requirements from the Department of Education. If we're ever going to move forward with any kind of a project that needs right approval, it has to be some, the data that you have and the designs that you have, the plans that you have, have to be approved, and in order to get that approval, you need to have that done by an architecture and engineering company. So these, the requests for proposals going to send out there will fulfill all of those requirements if we get, go down the road and have to take next steps. All of that will be in place. And then the last item on my report tonight, I just wanted to take a moment to say a big thank you to Monica Blanchett, who has announced that she's leaving BPAC, due to take a, an opportunity in another field, or in another, for another institution, I should say, almost in the same field. But she really worked well with us at the town level and the school level, worked really well with our kids, was a great ally to have with a lot of the prevention education that we get out to our students, so wish her the best. And of course, our, our other Monica, who's also retiring tonight, Ms. Thompson, who, she'll still be here a few more months, so we can, we can say more to embarrass her later in, in the year as we get closer to June, but also wanted to wish her the best as her retirement is upcoming at the end of the school year. And that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Salito. Okay, moving on to agenda item number nine, administrations, administrators reports. We don't, they didn't submit any, right, this month?
Yeah, yes, they did. So I can make a motion to receive and file with great thanks, as always.
Second.
Motion made by Donison, second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, item, agenda item number ten, report from the school committee's student representative. Ben, all yours.
Thank you. Everything is going well at the high school so far, beginning the second semester. Not much to report today. We had, last Wednesday, I believe, right after school, we had the high school sit meeting. We didn't have much on the agenda besides discussing what we discussed last time with the hours of community service for our vision of a graduate requirements. We didn't get much with that, besides, still, we're going to stick with our twenty hours of community services needed to graduate, as well as, they're still in the works with figuring out how it will work, consulting your guidance counselor about appropriate choices with community service entries or community service tasks. And they're going to be phasing in sports and activities like football, or like sports, sorry, not being counted as community service, because previously, or still now, it hasn't been in effect yet, but they're going to start phasing it out where you can't count sports or after-school activities as community service hours. So they're going to start phasing this in within the, sophomore and freshman, but juniors and seniors will be grandfathered in and can count after-school extracurricular activities as community service hours. Other than that, I conclude.
Thank you, Ben. Okay. Moving on, agenda item number eleven, reports of school committee subcommittees. Anyone? Sylvia?
I, I wasn't able to make the meeting, I had other arrangements for Steer Farm's sit committee, but I've got the minutes requested, and hopefully they'll be in, well, unfortunately not for this meeting, but next time, hopefully.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Agenda item number twelve, correspondence and communications, and I don't believe we have any. Moving on, item agenda, agenda item, number thirteen, new business, homeschool applications.
Make a motion to approve all the homeschool applications as listed?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Policy number seven, three, seven, three, one, one, youth nutrition student account policy, first reading. I'll hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, motion made by Sylvia, second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So discussion and vote on the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school calendar. Do I have any discussion? Motion to open?
Make a motion to open?
Open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No discussion?
Yeah. I've said a motion, you motioned to open this, and I second for your discussion.
Okay.
So we'll have a discussion.
Do we have any discussion about the calendar, anybody have any questions or questions for Dr. Salito?
I love that, it looks good, it's into my schedule very easily.
Yeah, I like that they, that we are in line with the state. I think that, that's very helpful to the parents, and the fact that we're giving it to them now, so they can make whatever vacation plans they have, so. Do I hear a motion to approve the calendar?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Sylvia?
Second.
Second by Donison, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on. The twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six annual meeting calendar approval, that's a school committee meeting.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Sylvia, second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Discussion of vote on DECA overnight field trip request to Orlando, Florida.
I make a motion to approve and congratulate them on their winnings.
Second.
Motion made by Sylvia, second by Donison?
Victor.
Victor, I'm sorry, second by Victor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda item number fourteen, committee comments on agenda items.
I would just like to add to what Dr. Salito said about Monica. I've had the privilege of sitting on the BPAC Coalition, and Monica is, and hopefully will still be. I believe she's going to stay on the BPAC, but not as the coordinator, but she's done an outstanding job, and her commitment to the kids, trying to educate them about the use of drugs and alcohol and vaping, and how it affects their bodies and how it affects them, and not just them, but those around them, their families and their friends, so she's done an outstanding job with that. And I would just like to offer my thanks to her for all she's done for the students and the kids in Barrowville, so.
She was a great asset.
She is a great asset.
It's gonna be tough to fill her shoes.
Yeah. Luckily, she is going to stay on, and whoever takes that role, she'll be right there to help them, and, so, I know the kids are going to miss her, too.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could, I apologize, I had a question. This is related to policy four-two-one-nine. The last part of that policy makes reference to the school committee entering a contract with a supplier where any committee member may have a beneficial interest, either direct or indirect. In my experience in the past, some members who may have a conflict would recuse themselves from, from voting, but wouldn't necessarily preclude the committee from doing business with an outside organization that, say, my, my brother operated, so I would not vote on that, but if it was a legitimate organization that the committee would feel would be worthy. I, I just, I'm just looking at it as if we're prohibited from doing business with.
Can you give me the, the page number and the section?
So it's the last, it's the last page on that.
Very last page on that.
So it, the head, the heading is conflict of interest at the, at the back, so forty-two nineteen. It just, it just says the committee should not enter into a contract where, you know, one of us might have a conflict, where typically you could recuse yourself, does that?
I think that means if you directly were impacted by the award. So if it's your brother or your aunt?
Okay.
Like, he, he would benefit from the.
So I personally, because it just said that, yeah, benefit interest either direct or indirect, so I suppose, yeah, that's fair enough. So I personally, because it just said that um, yeah, benefit interest either direct or indirect, so I suppose, yeah, that's fair enough. So, yeah, so if it's my company, this committee is not going to
Right.
Gotcha, okay, I just wanted to kind of clarify, I had that question and I
And this, and this policy was vetted by a legal council?
Yeah, no, no, I'm sure it was, and it just was just, seemed like a conflict in my head about what my experience was, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, moving on. Agenda item number fifteen, pending issues, the artificial turf update, is there any update?
Uh, no updates since the last meeting, um, from my understanding, we're still waiting on a decision, uh, court decision on the, the latest legal action. Like, is there any data on that? No.
No?
Not as far as I know. Judge should, judge should be, uh, we're anticipating that the judge makes a decision by the end of the month, but I don't think there's any data. Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number sixteen, adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.